Good evening. I will open this January 8th meeting of the Newton Planning Board, and we will start with the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing I have on the agenda is the stormwater management changes, which I...
So you did not receive a pack in the ex plan?
That's fine.
So since July, we had started going through them when we had time to kind of tweak it to Newton standards.
Sure.
The model that we are using is the Southeast Watershed Alliance. It's the one that EPA has recommended everybody do for MS4 standards. Unbeknownst to me, in November, they tweaked their model ordinance a little bit more. So I'm reconciling... It's not dramatic changes, but I'm reconciling the discussions we've had with the recommendation to see if there's any problems with it. And I haven't seen any thus far. It actually cleans up some of your concerns as we have gone through, some of the spelling errors as well, that I think reconciles some of the confusion and some of the language. It actually makes it a little bit cleaner to read.
Okay.
So I've started going through that. I didn't have time to finish before your beanie pegs go out or even print today.
That's fine.
But that's already the status, so at the next meeting.
We'll take a look at it. Okay, great.
And that way, we can plan public hearing and adoption.
Right.
Well, so at the next meeting, I'd like to go through it in full. If you're comfortable, which is... That might take a meeting or two. That's not a big deal. When you're comfortable with it, then we can move it to public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds great.
Just one comment on the agenda. You're talking about an ordinance. We're not talking about an ordinance.
No.
We're talking about a regulation.
Correct. It's regulation. Yeah, you're right. Thank you.
So we should do cross-up ordinance to reg...
Yeah, it should just say regulation.
And it's specific to that, you know, subdivision afterwards.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes from 12:11.
So moved.
Second. I've got a couple of comments. Page three in number two. It says that for inclusion in the warrant in 2020, we're not putting this in the warrant because we're doing... This is regulations and not... So it basically...
I'm sorry. That was my error. I had her add that. You're right. I thought we were going to end up making this ordinance later on, but...
Nope.
Okay.
So we're just gonna...
My problem. My error, I should say.
Right. So that shouldn't be there.
Okay.
Also, in 3B, in between when I rescinded the second and before Charlie's motion, it should in there indicate that the reason why we changed was because Kinsley Corner is a residential street with very little use. And that's why we decided to go from 20% to 10%. I think the rationale should be in the minutes.
So how do you want to word it? The reason being?
It's a residential...
That Kinsley Corner is a residential street which will have very limited use and therefore can justify a lower bond.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yes.
All right.
And also, at the bottom of page three, you repeated item two again.
Where is it?
The bottom of page three. That whole... That section is the same as number two. That whole thing should be gone.
All right. Job.
Yeah, and that is all.
So just delete that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You caught the typos on the last page?
No.
Typos on the last page. All right.
Which typo is on the last page?
This is not my marked copy. There was just a redundancy of words.
We're not going to talk about it. Do you want to have my notes on my table? No, I have... Why would they update them for the new version of the model ordinance? But in two weeks, ideally, we will. I have to give it to you guys ahead of time. Super. All right.
Thank you.
Drive safely.
Was it on the last page?
Oh, no. I apologize. Gail probably caught them from the difference between the ones that she sent out and the email ones that she sent out earlier. They're not here. That's excellent.
We'll double-check again. She'll double-check the... Do a spell check or something with it. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Do I have an approval for... With the changes? I mean, all unanimous with the changes?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Road acceptance, Sarah's Way.
Is the... Filled out? There was no park mentioned on the plans. I went through all the minutes.
Yeah, I'll explain. We discussed the... The problem of longevity on board sometimes. It was something that we had discussed when we did the Sarah's Way extension, which was the chair of the planning board at the time, Ann Miles, a member of the planning board at the time, had been talking because we're not just getting the roadway on the deed. I believe it's called a hammerhead turnaround.
Okay.
Oh, for Americans vehicles.
Consequently, there... We should be getting a slight, somewhat larger piece of property than just this skinny little strip. It has a kind of odd shape.
Right.
And the developer at the time kept mentioning that it'd be a nice place to have a little park.
Right.
And so on my notes, which I referred to when we were discussing Sarah's Way, I had made several notes about this little park.
Right.
It was never...
So it's because it's not on the...
It's not on the plan.
So it's not an issue?
No.
Okay.
No.
So...
We just have to make sure that when the deed comes in, somebody's going to have to sit down and make sure that it has the proper coordinates.
Deed has come in.
No, that was Kinsley.
Oh, that's Kinsley.
Right.
Excuse me. Okay. Okay. All right. Who does that? Who makes sure that the coordinates on it are right?
Mr. Rizzo will send us the deed.
Right. He'll present us the deed. We just... It's always good to double-check. But there...
From there? You need to get it from the plan?
Yeah, we have to make sure that what's on the map...
Okay. That's fine.
There are all sorts of little...
And then we'll have to record it.
Right.
It'll have to be recorded when everything's...
Yeah. The selectmen technically are responsible for doing the deed.
Because it can't be...
Are they recording the deed?
Actually, they're supposed to be because it's not a planning board. We're just... I would move that we recommend the town accept the Sarah's Way extension as a public road.
Make a motion right now?
Make a motion that we recommend that the selectmen accept Sarah's Way extension as a public road. Yeah.
Do we do that before we set the bond?
You can amend the motion to reference the bond.
You don't have the bond information yet.
Right. We don't have the... Did we have... I'm not remembering from...
Yeah, we had the numbers last... That's why she said to bring them.
Last time, yeah.
We had the numbers.
You just didn't use them.
Yeah, you were checking about the park. That's why you didn't do it last time.
Right.
But we have the numbers.
Okay. So it's... That's one. And the other is to recommend to the selectmen that the maintenance bond to be held for two years would be, and then I'll look to you to get the numbers.
Okay.
Why don't we start fresh? So are we doing, yes, Sarah's Way or Sarah's Way and Sarah's Way extension?
It's the Sarah's Way extension.
Sarah's Ways are...
It's all the same.
Okay. So let's start.
So why don't we start with the bond?
Okay.
Okay. In which case, I will move that we recommend to the board of selectmen that they require a maintenance bond on Sarah's Way extension in the amount of...
Do you want to use the 10%?
I would suggest that.
Okay. So I figure that, including the engineering and the contingency, it's $6,927.
To be held for two years.
Two years. Hence, a maintenance bond, correct?
Right. I'll second that. For the same reasons as we use the 10% on Kinsley.
Yeah, that's even less travel.
Right. Okay.
Unless we do make a little park up there to get a desire to...
Okay. All those...
You might want to check my math. I just took 10% of that and kept those.
You still got it.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. That's unanimous.
In that case, my next thing, Madam Chair, is to recommend the board of selectmen accept Sarah's Way extension as a public road.
Second.
It should actually say upon receipt of the...
Upon receipt of the deed? Yeah.
Of the deed and...
And the maintenance bond.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Is there an outstanding road bond on this road?
That's a good... I think there is.
You mean, do they have more money down than what we're going to require? I think they're going to get a...
Well, they're a separate bond, so it's... We're going to say that you got to post a new one. But the other one, we...
And we got one, right.
Right. I think we have to get the bond in first before we release the other one. Yes.
He's asking if the construction bond has been released.
Right.
Right.
Maintenance bond is what they have to sell.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So the construction bond can be released.
Right.
So it'll be like we did with Kinsley Corner. What you take in that hand, you give them the other with the opposite.
Right.
We do.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would move that we recommend to the board of selectmen that they release the bond... The road construction bond in the amount of $11,898 plus accumulated interest.
One second.
Upon receipt of the roadway maintenance bond.
Yeah. Did you get that? You were looking confused.
We didn't, based on the... Getting the other bond, what we did with Mr. Bartlett was...
Well, that's what we did. They have to give us the...
The new one.
They have to give us a new one before we give them their money back.
We didn't do it like that before.
Right.
Oh, okay.
But that's fine. Do it that way.
So bond receipt.
Right.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right. Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Manifests. NEPR, $51 to record father and son for the... To record the subdivision.
Move to pay.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Budget.
Operating.
Petty... Yeah. Operating budget, $106.54 postage and mileage to the registry.
Move to pay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Gee, Jen, you're good today.
Thank you.
You're good on the spot.
I'll sign this in a minute.
Yep.
Great. Correspondence.
Just the...
Just this? We got a... A meeting for town municipal first responders and others. It's for gas emergency responders, elected municipal officials. And is this... I think it's like online thing. And it's like what you need to do in an emergency.
If there's a problem on the gas line.
Interested, you can take a look at this.
Yeah.
See if you want to do that.
They've redone their online municipal website information. It's their information from municipalities. And they sent out new usernames and passwords. Looking at it, I'm expecting that everybody gets the same one.
Yes, unitelton. Yeah. So if anybody's interested, they could take a look.
Yeah.
I assume that that went to the emergency management.
This went to everybody. Yeah. They sent it to everybody.
Every selectman got a copy of it.
Okay.
Yeah. They just blanked it everybody.
Okay.
Okay. I will also tell you that we had received a communication from the selectmen's office asking everybody, all the departments, to pare their budget down by 0.6%. So since they needed it before this meeting, Gail and I looked at the budget and we took $300 off of the budget. But as a result...
This evening, I put the money that the board... The board wanted people to cut their budgets by 0.6% to save $12,000. Tonight, I made the motion and it carried to put it back in the budget. If you want to watch this evening's selectmen's meeting for the...
Details.
Yeah. Real fun discussion. But basically, we need... We're getting to the point where we're counting paperclips.
So does that mean that the recommended budget is what we submitted to the board of selectmen?
Yes.
Yes. Right. It stays. We took $300 out and then ended up going back in, so it stays the way it was before.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you know the rationale of why I did this before the meeting because I didn't have it to choose.
Yeah.
There was a deadline of noon today.
Yes.
So...
I know conservation meeting last week, we voted that we're not changing it. As skimpy as it can be and, you know...
Actually...
We're not doing it.
Conserva... I can tell you exactly... Conservation reduced their budget by, it was like $13.
$13, I think she said.
Conservation, $18.
Oh, $18.
Yeah.
You need that $18 for postage.
Exactly. Postage is going up $0.05.
The town budget, because we received a Primex rebate for this year of $12,000, it became a moot point, at least to me. There were people who wanted to still cut the budgets. However, if you watch the videos of the selectmen's meeting where we discussed the budget, we literally nickel-and-dime people. And I mean, I understand, you know, we need to be... Know what's going on. But to argue about whether or not a department really needs $25 and can't survive on $20 worth of postage, it's beyond my comprehension.
Right.
All right.
I have a...
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay.
We received Kinsley's road maintenance bond.
Oh, good.
I got that in yesterday. And we have a voluntary lot form that needs to... Lot merger form that needs to sign via the Highland Street.
All right. Did we check this?
I'll check it. I got it from Andrea.
Yeah, I know.
We're supposed to go over those together as a board and then decide if we need... So that should be up at the next meeting.
Yeah. We'll have to do this at the next meeting. We'll look at it and we'll just make sure it's okay. Yeah.
So many problems.
Right. Right. So we'll do that and carry that over to the next meeting. That'd be good. More? No?
I have an observation.
Okay.
From our decision for down on Main Street, after I got home, I remembered that we never talked about the destruction or the raising of those structures that are there. Like, we didn't even talk about it.
Oh, you're talking about the house that they're going to demolish?
Yeah, the houses and the three buildings and all that. I'm like, we never even talked about that. So I'm assuming that they have to take those down anyway.
Yes.
So... But then, like, I know in previous, we had said that no occupancy permits would be granted until, you know, buildings were taken down and stuff like that. So I didn't know if that's going to be a problem down there or if there's, you know, what we can do about it.
I think in this case, it's not going to be a problem because there's no advantage to them to leaving the building there. I mean, in cases where we have been concerned, there's been concern that we may end up with two buildings instead.
Right.
Right.
Well, I'm thinking if they could do the other three driveways that don't go through that building, that's what I'm thinking. Could they do that other driveways and just never do that one where they have to pull down the...
Technically, because of the way they've laid that out, if somebody driving past once... And it's all been recorded, I'm assuming, or it will be soon.
Hasn't been recorded yet.
Oh, one sub may.
The subdivision?
Yeah. Yeah. The minor hasn't been done yet.
We didn't get the minor yet.
Okay. Once it's done and for sale sign, you know, if somebody driving past goes, you know, I always loved that house, it is situated in such a way that technically, it could be left. No, the house could be built on the lot.
Right. So one of the driveway that goes right through it for those other lots, I think.
No. This one is just the one with the one driveway.
Yeah.
This is the one that's across the street from the other road.
Yeah. It's across the street from the one end of Wentworth Drive.
Right.
The house could be saved, but they can't put another house on the road.
Exactly.
Right. But I doubt that they're even going to put a for-sale sign on that lot before they raise that house.
It would make sense, though. That house has a bomb shelter in it.
I wonder if they know that.
I'm sure they do, but it's...
Maybe not.
I remember from when I was a kid, I knew somebody that lived there and...
And they have a bomb shelter. Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a very 50s kind of thing to do.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Air raid.
Yeah. Crackers and ancient bottled water. Actually, it wasn't bottled, then it was tinned.
Tinned water. Yeah. Okay. We have...
So anyway, Sandy, whether they leave the existing house or are building a new house, they can only fit one house on the lot. And if they want to put up something new, they have to tear it down because the new house would have to basically go where the existing house is.
Right. Right. I forgot to look at the map, but where they go into, but...
Can I make one announcement?
Sure. And then I...
Oh, just reminding people that on January 10th, Thursday night, at the theater at the high school, will be the school budget presentation for public hearing. I am encouraging all people to attend. And next Monday... Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Thank you.
And next Monday, here in this hall, we'll be presenting at 7:00 the town budget for public hearing. And next Monday is the 14th.
The zoning board meeting at 7:30 that same day?
Yeah, we're in the back room because we've got nothing going on.
Yeah.
They wind us a long time ago. Start next Monday, what time, Jim?
Starting at 7:00.
Here in the big hall?
Right. And everybody's encouraged to attend.
And it's the town budget.
Okay. Also, Mr. White and Mr. Melvin's terms expire in 2019. So if they're going to re-enlist, they can fill out their paperwork between January 23rd and February 1st to get on the ballot.
I've got a built-in reminder.
You have anything?
Just something for the board to be thinking about. We discussed when you guys were doing your budget about you put in a line item because you wanted to do some work on the master plan potentially. I think it was $2,500 or $2,000, somewhere in that ballpark. What you might like to do as far as the master plan. I had written up a memo for you guys maybe two or three years ago about the status of your master plan. It hasn't changed since then. And it's aging.
It's become...
It's aging. So there are some basic steps that a lot of boards will take when they're starting to think of updating their master plan. It can be as simple as starting with a survey. And that would be something that that amount of money could cover in doing a little bit of other outreach or template work or meetings. So just start thinking about your master plan. If you haven't looked at it in a decade, please do look at it. If the vision and land use sections are the two required chapters The vision and land use sections are the two required chapters, so if you only have a little bit of time, look at those two chapters.
Okay.
And look at the last time any sort of survey work or public meeting was held to solicit public input.
Okay.
The last thing I know about is the Rose Corner roundabout, and the Village District.
The charrette thing?
And the Village District's charrette, you did about eight years ago.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, before I moved in.
All of that's before me, so...
Yeah, I think the last chapter we redid was the history chapter.
And it's probably like, at least like, eight or 10 years ago, probably, at least?
I mean, the, the basic steps for doing a master plan update is you do some level of new outreach if you haven't done any in a while, that can be combination or singular of a survey, you can do a public meeting or charrette, you can do both, and from that, you can start to do a fairly simple vision statement, using past master plans as a guide, new input, sort of what people have voted on, discussions in town, use a variety of sources to work on a vision chapter. And some towns will do that, just as a small step, and then they start to work on their land use chapter, and then they might do another chapter at a time. Some towns, I'm working with one town that's setting up a template, so they're writing their vision chapter, then they're setting up a general template for future chapters to follow, so there'll be succinct chapters that will fit into a larger document, but is allowing, in that town's case, their conservation commission has offered to write the natural resources chapter, and then for the planning board to consider, so it's kind of taking the load off of the planning board a little bit.
That's great.
It works in some towns, but in others, it helps spread the cost and the manpower out, and gets more volume, so maybe just a general option and things to kind of be thinking of.
We should also consider updating, as we're supposed to do annually, the capital improvements plan.
We had a very hard time doing that last time.
I know, I just, I would be remiss not to bring it back up.
I have a question, because I saw what you had handed out the last time, and it looks terribly complicated. We do CIP in East Kingston, and I'm just working on it right now, and it seems to be a much simpler kind of thing, so would you be interested in seeing what that looks like to see if maybe that would work better, and it's less complicated?
I know I would, because...
I'm willing to look it in, for ideas on where to go.
Because I think it would be easier for the departments to plug their information in it, because it's not quite as detailed, and I'm sorry, I think that what you had was pretty complicated, it was complicated for me to follow it anyway, so, okay, I'll bring it for the next meeting.
I understood and had no problem with what we had the last time, however, I like very esoteric writings, and yes, I did, I heard from many department people who were like, I'm kind of lost.
Okay.
Even though we did have a meeting that they were invited to, where they were told how to fill it out.
Of course, of course, but we know how that attendance ends up coming, or not.
I can't fill forms out for people.
No.
Yeah.
No, so, I mean, this is maybe a more simplified format, and it might be easier for people to plug their information in.
That would, that would be, it would be nice if we got in the habit of, in January, discussing the CIP.
We have, we have to do it every year in East Kingston.
We're supposed to be doing it every year also.
And it gets included in the annual report.
Oh, okay.
With it, you know.
And it should be discussed by your budget committee ideally.
We don't have a budget committee.
Well, I mean, it's based, what they, the figures that are on there are based on the department's budgets that they give to the selectmen.
Right.
Okay, all right, I will bring that, I'll have that copied for the next time.
Thank you.
All right, sounds good. I don't have anything else, anybody else have anything?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.